Okay, we're going to open the meeting. Well, the Pledge of Allegiance followed by a moment of silence led by Ms. Haversky.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hearing as citizens, anybody would like to speak for three minutes? Come on right up. If you want to head over there right by the attorneys and sign your name in that to the sheet.
I appreciate everybody getting together. You're going to approve Alarna pretty soon, I hear. And I had opportunity to speak with and meet with Chris Brother down in the city. We had about an hour session, and there were some good things, there were some bad things, like in all things in life. And I do think there is an opportunity for growth. I also hear that the Wood District has chosen to do a two-year limitation on it, which I think is a good thing. But there's definitely an opportunity for an increased revenue base that comes from the growth that may follow from Alarna. And so I encourage you to continue to study it and look at it. I'm from an organization that has proposed enhancements to Alarna. We'd like to have the fair wage proposal that's put in. We're looking at about 175 percent a minimum. I'd also like to have a minority requirement in there that we, if we do work, we hire people, that we do a minority uplift to make sure that the people who need jobs in this community get them, as well as the marginalized people. And then I also want to look at a workforce that's diverse, to make sure we hit the zip codes that need it the most in the city. It does no good if we're going to have growth without affecting the people that really need it. And so I speak on those three things, but I encourage you, I really do. I think you're doing a good job of looking at it, bringing out what's possible, looking at that two-year out if it's not working. Even Chris said, "Look, it don't work after two years, maybe it's not supposed to happen." And so, you know, I agree with the direction you go, but you can't forget the people. A lot of times we do development, we look at the sods, and we look at sidewalks, and we look at landscaping. If we're not affecting the people that are in our city, we're not lifting people up. And I just want to give a nod to those folks. I appreciate Bradie Brock here. He's a champion in that area, and I look forward to hearing from him later. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Eric.
Anybody else like to speak?
Hello. My name is Mary Neal. I am the parent of Mario Henry, and he attends Harding Elementary School. I'm just here to ask a few questions about Mario because he does have an IEP and he is a special needs child. I just wanted to know and get clarification of when is it okay for staff not to follow a child's IEP? When is it okay for staff to not offer all and every service that's available to a special needs child? I would like to know, when is it ever okay for assistant principal to hit a child? And when is it ever okay for the main principal to discipline a child not based off of behavior, based off emotions, and because she feels a special needs child can control himself for two weeks and then have outbursts, and then control himself for another week? So, because he can control himself sometimes, even though his behavior plan and his IEP is for emotional support, that he should be able to control himself the whole time? I haven't got any clarification, and I would like some.
Ma'am, we have a policy not to discuss specific child issues, student issues, at a public board meeting, but I can refer you, is Angie Kanaki here?
Yeah, Ida.
If you would like to speak with her, she's our special ed supervisor, and she'll be able to address your question.
Okay, I've spoken with her before, and I'm still waiting for answers and things for, things to get done because this has been going on for several months now.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else like to speak? If not, we will move on. We're going to move on to World War I commemoration project. Mr. Mary Jane Phillips-Cohen.
John Williams.
Johnson.
For the committee.
All right.
And also Bill Wells, my smarter brother. We could pass these out, just so you kind of get a thumbnail sketch of what we're involved in.
Thank you so much.
Anyway, the first two pages on that, the first page is the front, and that has the names of every, every man that gave the ultimate sacrifice. And that was a real challenge, especially it's been 100 years. But we came up with, I believe, no, 108 military.
190, oh, 188.
188 US military. And then.
Hallers Army.
Hallers Army, which is very interesting. It was a volunteer force that was brought together in the United States by a guy by the name of Haller from Poland. And his whole thing was to settle the issue and then also regain the nationhood of Poland, which he did in 1919. But anyway, where it's going to be positioned is if you look at State Street and you're, you know, you're looking west, you have a, right away you have the Purple Heart Memorial right there. And then, what I did, I paced it off approximately 37 feet to the south, and that's where we'll have that monument. So that gives, you know, you have to have solitude for each one of those monuments. That's what makes it special. And the fact that every one of those monuments has the name of someone who gave their life. And that's what we wanted to do with World War I. That hasn't been done to them. And although we do have, of course, the Veterans Memorial Stadium. So anyway, we're going to put it there probably approximately 18 feet in from the sidewalk. And what we'll do is, I was the chairman for the Korean War Memorial, and what we've done is, we have supplied the power and water for Purple Heart, and we'll plug that in so that we'll have power and water then for World War I. And then my guys from Korea, they'll take care of all the landscaping, anything that has to be done. And hopefully we'll even get a little bit more money for perpetual care. But, you know, I think we've done just about everything that we can. And what's so crazy about this is, we should have come to you folks earlier about this, but I think we got so involved in finding out academically the most sensitive part of this history, and that's what these men did, who they were, and then also, of course, raising our money and stuff. But here we are. And if you have any questions, feel free to ask me or ask Bill. Please consider it. Is that, take a look at that, Tim? Is that, would that fulfill the needs of what we needed to, or you need a little better drawing or something? Hey, how do you like my art?
I'm just saying, no, we have.
The lines are very straight. Not just to scale, but I know what I'm looking at. So we do have, the way that we have traditionally managed memorial park is we have leases with sponsoring organizations for each one of the individual memorials that is, that are on Memorial Park. And within them are conditions stating that prior to allowing a new memorial to go on the park, that we will take this, you know, this packet, and Mr. Spiegel's got a group now where he's brought all these various organizations together.
You're part of the group.
You're familiar with the process. Distribute this amongst them, have them review it to make sure that the memorial itself isn't going to detract from or block, where as you said, we need to have our own solemn place for each one of these memorials. Make sure that generally we're not going to have an issue with the other memorials that are currently in place. And then, once we receive that, that high sign that it's appropriate, we'll then be in a position to enter into a lease with you as well.
Well, right now, as a matter of fact, Vietnam Veterans America Chapter 435 donated $1,000 to the project.
Wonderful.
And then Vietnam Veterans Memorial Committee donated $1,000. And then BFW Post 470 donated $5,000. 470 has been around and a part of things for quite a while, and they would be our, you know, our authorship at this point.
That's wonderful. So they'll sponsor you on this, in this. But nonetheless, Mr. Spiegel, if you wouldn't mind continuing the lead. We just, in order for us to move forward, we need to have, because of our contractual rights with everybody else. We need to have an authorization or an okay, a general consensus. I don't want to make it sound like it's too big of a deal, a general consensus that this is going to be all right, and then we can enter into a lease with you. As you're aware, Mr. Spiegel, just for the benefit of the public, do you want to explain what process you're undertaking and where you are?
Sure. About a week or so ago, we met with the folks from Knox Log, and we have the process, we have the whole process initiated to incorporate as an organization. And in fact, I haven't checked the emails today, expect one very shortly saying, yes, we are in fact incorporated. That should be done within the next week or so at the latest. As you know, you were there when we had that. And from there on, we have to go into the 501(c)(3), which takes a little bit longer of a time, but we should be able to have this wrapped up, in fact, much sooner than we anticipated. All the parties, all of the various leaders of each of the memorial organizations are all on board, and a lot of that little adult drama has kind of gone by the wayside, and I think we're going forward. Would you agree, John?
I would say so, but in a time-sensitive manner, can we have this by Memorial Day?
Yeah, that's what I was going to say, John. You guys have your under here, and I know you're, you want to unveil this on that date. So, I mean, as long as we get an answer back soon, we'll speed it up. It shouldn't be a problem.
Well, I can, I can begin the lease now with which organization, which organization will be the lessy?
The lessy? Well, it would be nice if we could do it with the, to the group that we are trying to prepare. Is it legally appropriate? That's what I'm.
We'll take care of that. So I'll put the lease together, I'll have some blanks in there. Once that lease is together, that will secure your site. That's something that if we're able to get a general consensus, Mr. Spiegel, between now and next Wednesday, I could have it on the agenda next Wednesday if you'd like.
There you go. Outstanding.
Definitely. When we have a meeting with the DEDs, within the next couple of weeks.
So that's just a matter of maybe emailing this to everybody involved and getting their okay.
I could have it by tomorrow.
Yeah.
I just need some work.
Sure.
And then, so we'll, we'll push it through. We'll get the paperwork in order, and of course, the board will have to review it at the general meeting next week.
Oh, that's wonderful.
But we'll, I'll make sure that happens for you.
We have our next meeting at the DEDs on next Tuesday, so.
Five o'clock, 5:30.
Good, okay.
Well, and the other part of the forming this group was so we can turn that whole thing over to that group, and it would be theirs, and then you can control whatever you want to do. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We're going to move on to the stadium turf. Mr. Brockman.
Thank you. So, I believe it was a month ago, after discussing the logo on the turf, it was decided that we would bring it back to a committee, and a committee was formed. So, we met twice, once in March and then once this past Monday. Through that process, we had input from as many stakeholders as we possibly could. At the first time around through the meeting, we all kind of sat there at the table, and we decided that there are emotional ties to putting an Erie High logo on the field and putting a, the original Erie Veterans Memorial logo on the field. And so in the end, a compromise seemed to be what everybody in the committee decided is we can move forward with. So then this past Monday, we finalized the four options. We originally started with eight that the architect provided, and after everybody on the committee gave me their top choices, the ones that received the most votes from the committee were collected. And in your packet, you will see, thank you, the four different options that the committee decided on. And I'll let you take a look at the four different options that the group decided to move forward with. The next steps are, starting tomorrow, we will have a survey put out to the general public. The survey is going to be available through our district website. There'll be a link posted on our Facebook page, and then we will have a physical polling station set up right out here with all the four options so that if you don't have internet access, you can come here and actually still place your ballot. That poll will be up until next Wednesday, the 17th, at about 2:00, and that's when we're going to close the polling down so that we can tabulate it and at least present to you guys what the public decided.
And also, by getting the information out, we're sending it to all the news stations?
Correct. Correct. There will be a, there was a media release that's already been sent out to the news stations that has a statement from us, explains what the process is that we're going through, and they have a picture of all four of the options.
Any questions?
Mr. John?
Yes, Mr. Hawkins.
I did not object when the committee was created. I do not object to seeking sampling public opinion, and I did attend the first committee meeting, although I'm not a member officially of that committee. I raised the question at our special meeting at noon recently about how much time we have, and I see that Neal wants to have the results of his sampling by next Tuesday, next Wednesday. My question, are we then going to vote to approve it at the meeting next Wednesday?
I don't know. I mean, I guess we can talk about that as a board, but I didn't think, once you take it to the community and they pick something, I don't know if we legally have to, I don't know, Tim, do we legally have to have a vote on it?
There's no obligation under the school code for the school board to approve the design of the turf. I mean, that's going to be an administrative and policy function for the district, so that's going to be a project.
Well, I believe it's our. Go ahead, Brian.
It was our intention to bring you a recommendation based on the results of the poll, and at the committee and the whole meeting, get a head nod consensus on moving ahead with that recommendation, and then directing the architects to design the logo based on, again, the recommendation.
Okay, well, as I said, I didn't object, and I don't object to seeking public input, but by the time of its nature, there isn't, in my opinion, a way to fairly sample other than social media, which a lot of people, a lot of citizens don't get to participate in, and a limited number of people in one week's time won't have what I consider an adequate amount of time to process and express themselves. For that reason, and because I believe in the end, we call the shot, I don't think, I know, I, when I agree, when I didn't object to sampling public opinion, I was not handing over my prerogative to think or decide otherwise. My point being, I think as of now, I plan to submit a resolution for the agenda to say, leave the turf as it is, and find another way to signify that the stadium is the home of Erie Royals. I, you know, we can debate it that night, we can shoot down my resolution, or we can pass it, and so, but I think it's been framed as you either care enough about the kids to put Erie High insignia on that turf, or you don't. And I think there's almost like, if not fully, people seem, some people seem to be bored with the concept of the Veterans Memorial. I don't want to, we've got other things to talk about here, and I just want to, I just want to have asked that question. I want to state my intention to put some simple resolution that says to essentially leave the surface of the turf as is, and wherever that leads us, then we can decide from there. But I did not want to hand over my decision-making one night of the process to whatever a committee found in response to their feelers that were put out. And again, I don't object to what Neal has done, how he's done it, and the people themselves. The first committee meeting, everyone in the room was sincere, honorable, well-intentioned, but I just think it's a big deal to veer from the time-honored dedication of that facility as a Veterans Memorial. Unlike Prepa McDowell, which were football stadiums, this is a community memorial to World War I veterans, which has expanded to include all veterans on that basis. I just don't want anybody to be surprised with the resolution, and you don't have to agree with me, but I just think it's important to do so. That's just how I feel.
That's fine.
Right.
Yes.
The other thing is, I'd like to know what each one of the options costs. Is there a significant difference in cost between one option or another? I would imagine what John's discussing is probably the least expensive option. I don't know that, I suspect so, but I, if they do do the polling, you know, two things, two concerns I have about that is, one, if the cost isn't on there, then you can't really, most people, I would think, at least, at least I think, is you should see how it's offered. A, is that the Cadillac, and B, is the Pinto, or is the Pinto fine, you know, or how are we with that? And two, social media, you know, and I agree with John, that those kids will, they'll be all over that, so I suspect it'll be skewed heavily because of their interest and, and frequency of use of social media versus, say, John's demographic, that might be a little bit different.
Mr. Brockman?
Overhead. Sure. If the board is, is considering not taking into consideration the polling results, I would suggest that we just not do the poll and have the discussion about that tonight, rather than asking people to give their opinion. If there's already set opinions on this board regarding this issue, we should just do it that way.
I agree.
Well?
I'm not pushing for that, but I understand the superintendent's practical reasoning for that. I'm not pushing that. I intend to do what I said and give us a week to think about it, but I guess I'm processing what he just said, that it might have the effect of participating public to think we're not going to listen to them. I want, I guess I have tried to keep an open mind, but the more I hear, the more convinced I am that the thought went into the creation of the stadium and the logo that was placed there the last time the turf was installed. I just think that needs to be reaffirmed and continued, and so that's my motivation. But I don't want to be trying to dominate board opinion, and if they want to express opinion tonight, let me say this, if the majority of the board doesn't agree with what I'm saying, I'm still going to put that resolution on, and then they can finalize it next week and shoot me down, but I, it's important enough to me to have it on there. So, I'd be surprised if a majority in here tonight would agree with what I'm saying, one way or another. I'm intending to go ahead and put it on the agenda.
Mr. President?
Yes.
So, I just want to make sure that everybody understands the process again. It's, it's not just a social media poll. So, we, the poll will actually be housed on our district website, so it's not just going out through Facebook. And the post that is going to be directed to Facebook is basically going to just have a link that takes them back to our district website. So, that's just one other way to find the poll, which is housed with us on our district website. And then that is also why we decided to set up the physical polling station here, so that if you didn't have internet access, you could still come and cast your vote.
Neal, can you also explain how we were going to track the citizens?
Yes. So, one of the questions that is going to be on the actual poll is, number one, we just have a simple question. The plan right now is to have a simple question that says, "Are you a city resident?", to which, if you answer no, you don't get to move on. If you answer yes, then we're going to ask that whoever is voting puts their address into a text field, so that on the end, basically, all the results can be exported into Excel, and then we can sort it by what the address is, so we can find out essentially if, if they put down an address that doesn't belong in the city, then that vote wouldn't necessarily count.
Mr. President?
Yep.
I understand that this process has become very complicated, and there is some, there's some discussion as far as like, just whether or not city, you know, like, you limiting it, us limiting it to city residents for a community asset is also something that could be a discrepancy. But at this point, now, all I'm saying, and Mr. Wagner can correct me if I'm wrong, but it's not the, it's, you know, like, it's the prerogative of the administration to make these administrative decisions. But if a school board member puts in a resolution, then that supersedes any of that. So, at this point, if, if that poll would take place, and one of these designs was picked, and Mr. Hawkins puts forth his resolution, then it would be a matter of, if the resolution passes, it stays as is. If the resolution doesn't pass, then you could implement what you went through, what you determined by the poll. So, you know, and I'm, we're not even sure if the poll itself wouldn't already determine that it's very, because now, when, Mr. Hawkins, when you put in your resolution, if you say "as is", the question that is, is whether or not, on this one, on this one option, on option A, it has the symbol in the middle, the thing that is changed are the end zones. So when you say "as is", do you mean that you want the end zones to remain red like they are now, or?
That's my thinking, and I think the compromising and the other suggestions that could be incorporated is a wall, an appropriate wall mural, an archway coming out of the locker rooms into the field, designate that it's the home of the Erie Royals, but the field itself, I think should remain essentially the same.
So, I mean, but, but that's basically what would come back. If you're going to move forward with the poll, then it would be a vote to either leave it as is, or whatever the, and then if that was voted down, then the administration would be back in power to make the decision what that is, and use whatever input that you wanted to use, if you wanted to use this polling method to come about with your answer. That's just my estimate.
Well, at some point, we're going to have to feel the money expenditure to install the turf, and at that point, we can express our opinions, but now is the time to decide what is going to be on, and that's why this whole thing arose. It's appropriate for the people who would feel strongly about putting Erie High insignia on the field, now is, it's now or never. But I just don't think that it's appropriate to change the memorial status of the stadium and the basic theme and the history of it. It came to be a community asset, not just limited to city residents, by the way, but to the war dead of World War I in the Erie area. That may even go beyond Erie County. You don't have to be hung up on that, but I have a great respect for that, and I just, I would, in any other way, be sensitive to the city boundary thing. I've been around here with the school district, owned and operated the public library, the museum, everything but the zoo, and handled the burden alone. But in this case, the school board couldn't afford to build the stadium in the 1920s, and so a community effort that involved people certainly outside of the city happened to raise the money and build the stadium as a multipurpose facility, not just a football stadium. So, as I'm saying, I'm not trying to throw a monkey wrench in this, I'm trying to do it in a timely way. I've listened and tried to process everything I've heard, and everybody has been reasonable, and I want to be reasonable, but I still think it's a the Erie area. That may even go beyond Erie County. You don't have to be hung up on that, but I have a great respect for that. And I just, I would, in any other way, be sensitive to the city boundary thing. I've been around here with the school district, owned and operated the public library, the museum, everything but the zoo, and handled the burden alone. But in this case, the school board couldn't afford to build the stadium in the 1920s, and so a community effort that involved people certainly outside of the city happened to raise the money and build the stadium as a multipurpose facility, not just a football stadium. So, as I'm saying, I'm not trying to throw a monkey wrench in this, I'm trying to do it in a timely way. I've listened and tried to process everything I've heard, and everybody has been reasonable, and I want to be reasonable. But I still think it's important to maintain the original purpose of the field, to respect the thought that went into the creation of the logo that was installed that's there now, and the comfort and the respect that people in the community have for it. It's not to say that I don't want to acknowledge that it's the home of the Erie Royals, and I'm not anti-Erie Royals, and I salute the faculty, staff, and coaches, and students who showed up in a very sincere, honorable way, presented their point of view. I'm just saying, I think this is a matter for public debate, and I'm just trying to not delay this by saying we should expand the time and the reach of sampling. I just think, I feel, I've heard enough to feel strongly enough to maintain the field as it is, and look for another way of designating it as a home of the Erie Royals.
All right. Thank you. We all do respect your opinion, John. Everybody's entitled to that.
That's all I want. Thank you.
You know that.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I know I was late, but I feel like I was right on time. This is the stuff I needed to. But as far as this debate and discussion, I do think that, that we are, I don't know, I could be wrong, but I just feel like that we're putting a lot of work into this survey, and I do want everybody's opinion, but like, I don't know how much time and dedication and money we're spending on surveying the situation, when we can take what we have now, the opinions we have now, and kind of weigh them out, and see which ones are greater versus like, doing this extensive, costly survey of even tracking down like, who is and who, people could use fake addresses, we don't know, you know, like, especially now, after we just had this meeting and told them that if they put the wrong address in, their vote isn't going to count. So that's kind of counterproductive, too, because now they don't, they could use their relatives' address. They don't, you know, we didn't put it out there publicly that, you know, how are we going to weed them out. But anyway, and I know that our efforts aren't just on social media, but before I shut my page down, I did do some surveying of my own on social media. And first of all, I think some people misunderstood what we were trying to do. They thought we were trying to change the name of the stadium. And from my understanding, that's not what we're doing. So once people got past that argument, because a lot of people argue with other people about that fact, because they were misinformed that the Veterans Stadium was not going to be the Veterans Stadium anymore. So once people, people said no, because they were, they weren't aware that's not what we're trying to do, once they got past that point and realized we were just changing the logo on the turf, most of them agreed to change it. They felt like, even some that were like, really arguing with people, they, once they realized we weren't changing the name of the stadium, they were like, oh, you're just putting the logo of the, of the team in the middle. Oh, no, I'm fine. I had several veterans hop on and said, I'm fine with it. You know, they felt like it would give the kids a sense of pride, you know, it would give, you know, actually, the city a sense of pride. We're trying to support our, our high school, we're trying to support the Erie Royals. Some people's concerns was that, what if something happens and the name of the school changes, or something? That was like, the main concern, like, just hopefully we stay Erie Royals and not turn into something else.
Change Street View.
But other than hoping that we don't change the name of the school, I feel like most people were very supportive of changing the logo, just because they just felt like it would give the children more sense of pride and wanting to, you know, be at that school, play sports for Erie High, and things like that, which I think, I support that, you know, I support that, you know, we give our kids, you know, a chance to have something, you know, of theirs with their logo on it. And, you know, we need to build some morale with these kids, you know, lots have changed for them. I think that that would further solidify the fact that we have one high school, well, you know, one high school, one sports team, things like that. So, and my daughter goes to collegiate and her friends, and at first she was like, well, you know, collegiate things aren't going to be on there. I'm like, Angelina, let's not go there. You know, I said, you guys don't have a sports team, but you guys play for the Royals, too. And then she was like, you're right, we do play for the Royals, so it would be our field, too. So, I mean, from what I'm gathering, and how I feel, I mean, if push comes to shove, you can always change the logo, just like you're changing it now. So why not give these kids a, why not give these kids a chance to feel some sense of pride by having their own field to play on with their logo in the middle, just like the other high schools, when they travel out of town, they have their logo on their fields, you know, when they go out of town to play. So when they come to us, when those teams come to us from out of town, and our kids don't have their logo on the field, I don't know, I mean, some of them really felt like they was going to feel some type of way. So that's just based off of what I surveyed on my own independently. I can see everybody's point of view, I can look at it objectively, and I just saw more people who supported having the Royals logo in the middle than not, once they understood that we weren't changing the name of the stadium.
Thank you. At this point, what I want to do is just, I'll ask each member, yea or nay, to proceed with the survey, and then, because we could debate this all night, but that's something we'll have to debate next week. And, so Robbie, go forward with the survey, yes?
I'm sorry, but I was ready to speak before you gave that.
All right, go ahead.
Thank you very much. I just want to thank the committee for working on this. We did come to a consensus, and I think even the student athletes felt, as they listened to the veterans speak, and people who had a strong opinion about keeping the logo, the Veterans Stadium logo in the middle of the field, they came to the conclusion that, yes, this is, this is workable. And I want to just let the community know that I was very proud of our students that day, that they wanted to still be able to share the field and honor the veterans. And so that's just something that didn't come up in our conversation, and I wanted to make sure that the community knew that. I also wanted to point out that unfortunately, because of our thoughts, the community's thoughts of cost, there were two options that I think would have been chosen, one that wasn't, had to be shields in the field with the veteran logo stadium, or the logo right in the middle of the field, and then the two Erie High shields were diagonally. And I think that wasn't chosen just because we were concerned about cost. Had we not been concerned about cost, I do think we would have had two options that would have had the Veterans Memorial Stadium logo in the center, and we would have had two options that had the Veterans Memorial logo in the arch. So I just want to point that out, because there are three options with the logo in the arch, and there's only one with the logo in the middle. So when we do get our results back, we need to be cognizant of that. That some people might have just made selections based upon, oh, I like this, I like this orientation of the way that the logo is sitting on a field. Thank you.
Thank you. My feelings at this point, and I know you just want a yes or no out of me, but my feelings at this point is, I will probably support the resolution that Mr. Harkins has put forward, and, and because I have a strong feeling about the logo itself. I understand that, but do we go forward with the survey? I'm going to vote no.
Yes.
No.
Interesting. I feel like I'm playing card right now. Yeah, I'm going to, more likely we support John, but I think we should still get the feedback. And if it, I'm just planning, if we don't get my option that I want, this is my plan, then, that I want to go option A.
Just a yes or no, please.
Yes.
Bobby?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes to the survey, but I intend to follow through with the resolution.
That's, I totally understand that. I just want to know about the survey, it's a yes for me.
I don't want to block it, but I don't agree with it.
So we will go on with the survey.
Thank you.
That's all we needed to know, and we'll have this discussion next week.
That's all. I respect and appreciate what Angela said, I went down and said, just because.
I appreciate everybody's opinion.
I appreciate that you appreciate it.
That's why we're here, everybody's entitled to it in the end. Hopefully, we come out with a good result.
Whenever the majority decides.
Yeah. Right now, we're going to, instead of four, we're going to go to five right now. Eagles Nest School of Academic Distinction, Ms. Iversky, and Mr. Bishop Brock.
Thank you. Our strategic plan has been very clear. We've been focusing on those five goals. Bishop Brock has come to us about two years ago with the recommendation of working side by side as partners with our students, and with some, some specific things that we can do for our students. And as of, I think it was in January, we got very, very serious about what that would look like. And so we're very excited to share with you the brochure that we created with the help of Erica Irwin, in preparing that for our students, to give them an option. When we talk about our pathways, the pathways to success, the pathways to graduation, the pathways to a career in their lives, we've given them options last year. We were able to really work on Recovery Academy, we worked on a variety of options for our students. Well, we're really excited to have the opportunity to work with Bishop Brock and his team on having this as an option for some of our fifth and sixth grade students. So as of January, they've been working, we've been working weekly to really get our curriculum together. We have our school district curriculum, our teachers will be there, but we will be working with mentors. And Bishop, I'd like to introduce you to maybe share a few of the things that we've been talking about, and to, it is a resolution on the board for you. Today was the day that we were going to share out with you. If you have any questions at all, feel free to email us prior to next week, when we're hopefully going to be able to move forward with it. Bishop?
Thank you very kindly, Bea, and to all of the school board members, Mr. Palito, and to all of you. Thank you very kindly for the opportunity to be here tonight. As Mr. Iversky just stated, we've been working very closely together. First of all, let me thank our superintendent, and our assistant superintendent, and Neil, and to all of the team of the school district. And of course, our team of Eagles Nest has had some phenomenal success within our city. As we speak, we have, I think, over 160 young people, young adults, working throughout various aspects in the city. I'm on the board of Hemet UPMC Hospital. I think we have about 130 working there. At this point, we just graduated five young men who just received their, passed the exam down in Pittsburgh for construction. They'll be working at the Erie Insurance Site, very, very excited about that. And then tomorrow, we will be graduating 10 young people from Collegiate Academy in our School of Finances. So Eagles Nest has been a very, very successful phenomenon, and we have over 700 applicants trying to get into Eagles Nest right now. What we've, let me introduce very quickly the team members that I have here. Mr. Fred Rush, one of our trustees, everyone knows Mr. Rush, and then our esteemed attorney/solicitor, Gary Ivan, and my executive assistant, Dr. Angelique Jackson, and then the chief of police of Edinburgh University, Angela Vincent, who will be the point person on this particular initiative. We're talking about making an investment in our young people. I've found that we have to start younger, and younger, and younger. For the last three years, we've had the Boys Academy, which is a summer program of learning. It has been phenomenally successful, but we wanted to go further and open up this institute, this institution, this school, this program for fifth and sixth graders. What we're talking about is teaching them civility, teaching them honor, teaching them respect, having that interwoven in the regular school district curriculum, also with an Afrocentric flair, teaching these young people about their history in a very civil manner. We're talking about having classes in etiquette, teaching young men how to be gentlemen, teaching young women how to be ladies. We're talking about each of our students having uniforms. I'm not talking about a polo shirt, but I'm talking about a blazer, and a shirt and tie, and the shoes shine. That entire dynamic of bringing about a sense of success and championship for our children. Once again, I wanted to thank the school district for working along with me behind the scenes, under the radar for the last several months to bring this to pass, and hopefully that in the wisdom of this board, you will endorse this, and give this your blessing, so we can make the investment in our children. Any questions from?
Mr. Congress, may I weigh in quickly before?
Go ahead.
So, as you know, and Bea pointed out, the strategic plan calls for us to have 100% graduation rate in six years. And so we've been creating these alternate pathways to student success. It started out with the Cyber and Credit Recovery Academy. Last year, we expanded that to the middle school, when we started really being a little more strict about students moving forward at the middle school level. We see a need at the middle and high school level for students that are still not being successful, either in credit recovery or in their home school. So we started exploring options with Bishop Brock. He actually came to the table and asked us about that at the middle school level. And we are also going to be talking to you probably in the next month about doing something very similar for high school students that aren't successful at the Booker T. Washington Center. So this is just a natural extension of the direction we've been going with the strategic plan. Again, we want to have 100% graduation rate. You know, we feel very strongly, if we catch more of these kids at the middle school level, that it's, they're going to be successful, get on track, and be successful when they get to high school. And in the long run, these type of programs are going to save us money, because we aren't going to be sending kids into alternative programs that often do not work for these students.
Thank you. Ms. Feeney?
So will we consider this to be a magnet, then? Will this be a magnet program?
We?
It's a program, but it is, it's not considered a magnet, because it's element, it's the middle school, it's fifth and sixth grade. The magnets that we have, they're for the high school, but it would be something that we would be looking at as a pathway to see, and again, it's a pilot for one year, so we're hoping that we can see, we're shooting for 60 students at this point, for this program, if we are able, but we will begin the recruiting, trying to get our, pardon me?
About the teachers, you told me?
The Erie School District teachers?
Yeah. I don't think everybody knows that.
Yes, they are Erie School District teachers that will be working side by side in the partnership. Yes.
Okay. And then I will send you my other questions as they come up, because you know they will. Thank you.
Go ahead, Tom.
So will this be essentially direct competition with charter schools?
Absolutely.
So why are we setting the goal at only 60?
I wasn't, I wasn't going to talk about that aspect, but you're eminently correct. In fact, we just brought three young people, children, back from charter schools to Erie Public School System. I have another one I'll be talking to you about tomorrow morning. And we've kind, this kind of leaked out to people, and there are people that really are intrigued about this new venture, there's no idea. I believe in public education, and I can envision a waiting list of people coming from various schools within our city to get back into the Erie School District. So once again, we hope that we will, you will lend your support and endorsement to this program.
The question I have is, will this be housed in just one of the middle schools, or in both of the middle schools, or?
It's actually at the Eagles Nest, so the location will be at the Eagles Nest.
Okay, I see. All right.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I just want to say that I'm excited about these programs, in just the aspect of it being, having the Afrocentric piece of it, because that was something that was in my mind, thinking about. And you took it to the next level, because I just remember back when I was in high school, you know, like, Gwynn Cooley and all of them had, like, the African-American clubs and things like that, mentors for us, and programs. And we don't have any of that right now. So I just want to commend Bishop Brock for coming up with this program, and bringing back some of the things that helped make us successful, the people my age that were in school at the time, and adding a new in school at the time, and adding a new twist to it. I feel like it's very important that, you know, our school district extends their reach out to the community, the centers such as the Eagles Nest, the Booker T. JFK, Martin Luther King Center, all of them, you know, because the neighborhood centers are important and big in our communities. They're where the kids, they're right near where the kids are. Tom kind of took the words out of my mouth about like retention back to the school district of students. I feel like Bishop Brock is very well respected in the community, and I feel like a lot of students will come back into the district. And hopefully, you know, once it extends to other places, some other, more students will end up coming back to the district. So, I'm really excited that the administration was able to assist and support this situation. And I hope that the board supports it too because it only makes sense. And I just feel like it'll be successful because a lot of kids in our district are minorities, and it's good to see, you know, it's good to have mentorship from people that look like you. So, I'm excited is all I can say, and I'll support it 100%.
Thank you.
Mr. President? My only other comment would be that I would hope that although they're not housed within the middle schools, that there's a close cooperation so that that example is being felt by the kids in the, in the middle schools that we still, you know, that are still in our middle schools. In other words, I don't want to separate the kids that have parents that care about them, pulling them out of our schools and then what's, I mean, I'm saying that if they're all, you know, I mean, it's a small number at this point, and that's good. And I want you to influence all of our kids. You know what I'm saying? I understand what you're, what you're trying to do, and I completely agree with it, and I think it's a great thing. I'm just hoping that it's, it's such a cooperative effort that it could help to influence the other kids that may not have the, may not have the parental, the parental supervision that would say, "I'm going to have you go to Reverend Brock's school." That's all I'm saying. I just want to influence those children just as much in some way. That's what I'm trying to get to.
Absolutely. President?
Yes.
Thank you. If I could just add a comment or two. I have had the distinct pleasure of being with Bishop Brock on a number of occasions. And I could testify that he is totally committed to the youth, not of color, not segregated in any fashion or set forth. He is here to help the children. And I've seen him work tirelessly for many years in trying to achieve that. And as far as I'm concerned, it's a win-win. Our children will be educated beyond reading, writing, arithmetic. They're going to be taught how to be a good citizen, how to be a good human. That goes far beyond the normal path of education. And for that, I totally commend Bishop and the entire crew because I see results, positive results. And it's, we're just at the beginning of seeing what is going to happen as we progress forward. To me, it's like, you know, a snowball rolling down a mountain. This is just going to get larger and larger and larger. And again, I, you know, your foresight is incredible, and I certainly will do anything I can to be in your corner, Bishop, and your crew. Thank you.
Thank you. I am also all for this. I do believe it's a win-win. I know one of the main objectives of this is to help those kids that are struggling. It's not just about pulling kids. It's about helping those kids to get them over that hump. And, you know, knowing Bishop Brock for the little bit of time I've known you, met you the first time across from my house, but I truly believe, I mean, he, his leadership and his respect among the city, anywhere you go, those kids understand that, and that's why they listen. So, I think it's a win-win. I totally support this.
Mr. President?
Yes.
The other thing that I'd like for us to look at though is our transition program for our students that are, after they finish this program in sixth grade, they're going to have to transition back into Erie Public Schools. So, I guess I'd like to have us look at that component a little bit if we haven't already and maybe you want to answer?
Well, I think I'm talking too much. There's a lot of things going on that I wasn't going to present, but we have a very extensive team. Dr. Andy Roth, Attorney Ed McCain, Dr. Charles Brock, there's so many people, another gentleman sitting here who I can't mention his name right now, but since I am the chairman of the board of the Erie House of Authority. And so, there's a lot of people involved, Michael Victor, president of Mercerhurst University, because ultimately, we're talking about creating the pathway for those who want to go on to college, that my thing is that they should be able to go to college free. And I've been in several meetings with Michael Victor and Keith Taylor about that entire dynamic. And so, this being successful, and I believe that it will, we're hoping that we can, the transition will not be back into, but to add a seventh grade next year, then maybe an eighth grade and on towards graduation. That's the idea that we're looking at, if possible.
We see this similar to credit recovery where some students go there for a year or two, get caught up and want to go back to Erie High or back to their regular school, and others like that environment and want to, and are successful and want to stay there. That's kind of what we were looking at with this program.
And I guess I keep going back to the fact that it seems to be like we're creating a magnet program then, like we did at Collegiate Academy, which I don't have any problem with. I'm just wondering if that's what we're going to be, if that's our goal down the road.
I don't think we really know where it's going yet.
Yeah, I guess I'd be more comfortable then because, because then it is definitely part of the Erie School District. I don't want, I don't want this to be perceived as a charter school. It's a question that Tom asked. Not at all. It is Erie Public Schools. It's working side-by-side. We, similar to what we have over at Emerson Gridley, we have our staff that's there. We have other staff, for example, at Emerson Gridley, Sarah Reed is there. So, it is, it's our programming working side-by-side to do some alternative pieces in the partnership.
We'll be using the same curriculum?
Absolutely. Our curriculum, yes, and our staff, the same training that we have for our staff, that's theirs. Our staff is the ones that will be there.
And I don't want to give the impression that I'm not quarters because I think this is fabulous. I just want to make certain that that perception is not out there in the community that we're starting a charter school.
And that is why Bishop is here to speak to it, to make sure that everyone here is well aware that this is a partnership between our Eagles Nest and the Erie School District, and we're working side-by-side with each other.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I just want to say, and she kind of touched on my thought, that I commend Bishop for partnering with the Erie School District, you know, not, you know, not trying to be in competition with, but coming to us in partnership, in partnership and using our curriculum, our staff. So, basically, I would consider this to be an Erie Public School. From what I'm gathering, that's exactly what it is. It's not a separation. It's not, yeah, it's just an expansion. It would be like opening another school, but just it's going to be at the Eagles Nest. So, from what I'm looking at, there's no difference in how they're going to be taught or they're not going to get the same education as the students that's going to Volson or wherever else. So, I'm excited, and I'm just, like I said, I commend him for not being in competition with, but collaborating with because there's a lot of people who want to be in competition with Erie's Public Schools, but he chose the right path, I guess for all of us, and partnered with us. So, I think this is great. And I mean, from what I understand, what I'm looking at and hearing Bea and everybody saying, Bishop says that he's a part of us now, and he just wants to enhance by adding the Afrocentric twist to it and some mentorship and some things that kids need, you know? My son needs this. I wish it was eighth grade. I can't wait to get to another grade. Hopefully, it catch up with him. But, you know, I think that, you know, this is great, and I support it, and I'm happy that he actually partnered with us instead of recommending us.
Thank you. Nothing else, we'll move on. Thank you. We're going to move on to the Enterprise Vehicle Proposal. Mr. Brockman?
Thank you. So, in your pile of papers, you'll find this packet, and I'm going to try to be as brief as possible with this one. About a year and a half ago, almost maybe two years ago, the individuals from Enterprise approached us and really started to take a look at what we had as far as the vehicles that are tradespeople, are cafeteria workers, and the ones that we basically are operating on a day-to-day basis. In the end, what it comes down to is that a lot of the vehicles that we are currently operating are at the end of their life. Many of our vehicles are basically being put together by our garage mechanics just so that they would pass inspection. So, in discussion with them, they told us, and we definitely investigated this thoroughly of, instead of purchasing new vehicles, we would lease vehicles from Enterprise. In the end, they're newer vehicles, and we are trying to right-size the vehicles that we would have with the trades that are currently using them. For instance, the person who delivers the mail from school to school doesn't necessarily need a big, huge van. He can get away with one of the smaller, smaller vans that are out there. So, the proposal that is in here and that is actually on the agenda for next week is that we would lease five vehicles from them starting in July, four of them being smaller vans, one of them being a truck, for, it winds up being about $25,000 each year. As compared to buying them outright, that cost, if we were to buy all five of those would be over $100,000. The terms of the lease would be about, it would be 60 months, and Enterprise has a deal where at the end of the 60 months, it will take back the vehicles and sell them, and we will be able to get anything above the book value that they would give us. So, at the end of the five-year term, it would wind up costing us less money than if we actually bought them outright.
And we did investigate purchasing them outright. We cannot even purchase them at the same price Enterprise does. So, in the long run, because they are able to buy them at a lower rate and lease them to us, it's going to be cheaper for us to do it this way. And it will also give us the ability to continually refresh our fleet without having to get on a vehicle replacement cycle over the next five years.
Any questions? Go ahead.
So, we've been buying, and this is a package lease. Is there an in-between? I assume your answer is maybe that this is better, but could we lease ourselves instead of buying? Is that a realistic intermediate step? I'm just curious.
I think that because of the age of the vehicles in our fleet, we're talking that within the next five years, we would almost have to replace every single one of the vehicles that we are using because...
But if you're comparing them to us, I, can you agree that us leasing?
He's saying us lease instead of going through Enterprise. Go to a dealership and say, "How much can we lease five vehicles for?" Or whatever it may be.
I'm just curious.
I'm not, I'm not even sure that we would be able to purchase through a lease on a state contract, but we can, we can look into that.
Well, I'm not pushing, and I'm just curious. The question just popped into my head as a result of this, but I'm a lot objective with this.
Go ahead, Tom.
So, would we, our fleet, we have a lot of vehicles. Would we just sell those all off and take that value and apply that toward the lease?
The problem is that we have not been buying vehicles, and they're falling apart. So, they're basically worthless, and we are at the point where we're not going to be able to continue to get them inspected.
Out of the 38 vehicles that we totaled, that we have, 37 of them are more than eight years old, and many of them are more than 20 years old. So, I'm not necessarily sure what kind of value we're going to get out of the vehicles that we're currently operating.
Mr. President? Yes. To explain to Tom just a little bit, the system's always been they buy vehicles and they, and they hang on to them as long as they can, and the mechanic tries to keep them going and keep them inspected for as long as they can. And like he says, we have some vehicles that stuck it out for 20-some years. Now, the only question that John asked that I think may be pertinent is, this company right now is going to manage all of our leases. Now, I don't know if that would cause another administrative, you know, problem for us, but I, what I think he's saying is, we can enter into leases ourselves, and whether or not this company coming in and say, "We can save you a lot of money," but they're still making money. So, I mean, but then it depends on whether or not the profit that they're making out of it, they may be able to lease, because they're doing a number, they may get deals on their leases. So, they may be able to, you know, their profit is coming from the deals that they make, so it may, it may end up being a moot subject.
We will look in, definitely look into that, but I believe that's what it is. I just want to clarify that they're not leasing and then giving them to us. We are leasing directly from them. And really, the advantage that we saw in this, not only because of the prices, that they, they're experts in this field, and they know when to sell the vehicles. So, they may come to us and say, "You know what? Three years from now, this vehicle, if you sell this now, you're going to maximize your dollars on the resale, and then we can push you into another lease." So, it just takes that whole issue off of our pages.
So, if we, we're currently maintaining all 38 of these vehicles. That takes presumably some manpower to do that. If we switched to this, would we be able to get rid of one of the mechanics? If we don't need them?
We only have a couple as it is, Tom.
But if we don't need them, though?
You have all your buses, Tom.
Yeah, we, they do have a maintenance package for that, that they did propose, but we did some, checked some references, and most people that did get that felt that it was not cost-effective. So, we would still be maintaining the vehicles as far as the, you know, the inspections and those type of things.
Should presumably take a lot less to manage a new fleet versus a 20-year-old fleet.
Yes.
Right now, you're talking about five vehicles, Tom. You're not talking about 38. You're still going to have little vehicles for a time.
And I also want to point out that we've added a number of buses, and more than likely, when everything, the dust settles with the NTA, we're going to continue to add more. So, we are not really in a point where we would consider...
How many mechanics do we have?
We have two mechanics.
Two. Two mechanics is all we have.
I don't know what you're saying. If you drop 38.
Maybe if you had six.
I don't know. I don't need to know what stuff.
We're not dropping 38, Tom.
I don't know what you're saying.
That's all I'm saying. We're still going to have a fleet. Yes.
Thank you. I just, the five-year lease program, the buyout provision at the end of the five years, have you done any investigating as to what the depreciable value is on a new vehicle, car, truck, van, whatever, at the end of five years? A lot of times, they play the game, leaseholders do, they play the game by giving you a decent monthly lease amount, but at the end of the term, the buyout dollar is substantially higher than the market value of the vehicle, thereby requiring you to enter into another lease. And it would be equitable for the school district to purchase the vehicles at the end of that buyout period. Got it?
Do.
Good.
The buyout cost will be set on the actual agreement that we sign. And so, if we go ahead and decide to go forward with the deal, whatever dollar figure is associated with that vehicle as far as buyout the day that we sign is what in five years it will be. And it is about, what, 10% of the actual, probably, yeah, 10% of what the cost would be to buy it out, like to buy it brand-new.
Mr. President? I'm sorry. Go ahead.
If I can add to that, in the particular, if the particular, in the particular agreement that is on board docs today, you're going to see an addendum to the standard lease contract that Enterprise uses, which gives the school district various options at the time at the end of the lease, whether it be to buy the vehicle back, whether it be to allow Enterprise to sell the vehicle, and that anything over and above that buy, that they receive over and above that buyback amount will then take as a lease, prior lease reimbursement. and above that buyback amount, will then take as a lease, prior lease reimbursement. And then there's, there's a couple of other options. So we're not required right then to buy the vehicles back at a premium or anything of that nature. We do have options and we can analyze those to figure out which are the most financially advantageous for the school district at that time.
Yeah. Well, yeah, I guess what I see is an acquisition beginning lease price of a vehicle, and then five years down the pipe, depreciation based on mileage, I don't know. The market value at the time of the five-year lease period, generally speaking, if they're giving you a decent monthly, then you really don't have equity in the buyout. In other words, if you bought it for $30,000, you paid $300 a month, you know, for five years, that's whatever that comes out to be. But when you look at it, how much of that payment actually went toward the equity of that five-year period? Am I, you get that, what I'm saying?
I do. But I just, we don't have any intention of buying these at the end of this lease. This is to help us keep our fleet refreshed on a regular basis without investing a lot of money upfront.
Okay. I just want to make sure we're not buying a set of goods here where you're going to be forced into a lease five years from now. That's not equitable. You know what I'm saying?
At the end of this lease, and again, we're only doing five vehicles at this point. At the end of this lease, if we determine that this isn't working for the school district, we can terminate and start purchase them, purchasing them outright.
Provided we don't continue with additional vehicles during the course of the five-year period. You theoretically, you could have 40 vehicles under the lease program within year one, two, three, four, five. So you're already into them, so to speak, for a substantial higher, substantially higher number than where you are today in this initial lease. So I guess my question, Neil, is we just want to make sure that we have equity there. The chances are, I would bet you a week of your salary, because you wouldn't want a week of mine, that they're not going to make, you, we as a district won't make any money on the sale of those vehicles. Amen? Amen.
Thank you. Go ahead, Eric.
Just to follow through with simple questions that might help, while see this as a good direction for us to go. I noticed that we have school districts that are using this. Williamsport, York, then we have some community colleges and colleges. Have you talked to any of them or do you know? Okay.
Yes. The, long before this proposal was put in front of you, the, as many of the people that they gave us names to, we spoke to them.
How long are the end of?
Isn't.
Into the lease? Is this the first lease period?
No. I believe the York was, I think, on year three of their cycle, I believe. Yeah, their first. And then the, the longest one, which is the Lackawanna County, was put out in, help me, can't remember the date. 2009, 2010?
So they're in the second.
They're in the second cycle.
I believe that to be accurate, although it's been two weeks since I've looked at it.
Thank you for your negligence.
Mr. President?
Anytime, sir.
Are you done, Eric?
Yeah, I just wanted to.
Go ahead.
My only question is, now, was this a problem that we decided that we had and we went looking for the company, or did the company knock on the door and say, you got a problem? We want to solve it for you?
I just, piggybacking on Mr. Casillo's concern, I am very skeptical about these couple leases. And our previous controller, Dave, brought this to us in August of last year. So we've been investigating it since then because I, I was not comfortable with the answers they were initially giving us, one being how you make your money. So we, we spent a lot of time looking at this.
Are there other companies that offer the same thing that we compare it to, or this is a unique company?
I believe with the fleet management, it's pretty unique. It's something that I have not seen before.
As long as we're careful on our stuff, Tony. I, I'm always suspicious when someone knocks at us, we're going to solve a problem for you that we didn't really realize we had. That's all. Anybody else?
Tony, you have other questions?
No, no, no. No, not that. Thank you. I was just hoping.
I was thinking, I could say, I know that Brian knows numbers and I trust what he says. I've been around him too long. We will move on to some exciting news, the bond issue.
So, yes, it was a very good day for the Erie's Public Schools yesterday. As I reported to you yesterday afternoon, the, the bond issue went very well. There was so much demand for our bonds out on the market right now that they were able to lower the interest rates throughout the day. And because of that, the, the total cost of this bond issue is $6 million less than, than what we brought to you back in March. And if you look at your place, I have two pages here that really summarizes the, the transaction that took place yesterday. This first page is really, shows the three bond issue series, and you can see, you know, we have one for the capital project that we're doing, and we did receive the full, or will receive the full $50 million on that on May 14th when we close on these bonds. And then we have the other two, Series B and C, which were related to refunding the 2009 bond issue and the 2011 issue with the swap. So in total now, we, we sold about $98 million in bonds, and if you can look down at the far right corner, you can see the yield on these bonds was very favorable. It's on average 2.7%. So again, a very good day for us. If you look at the, the second page, this is the summary of the new versus the old, or the new debt service. And I just want to point out that the report that we gave you, again, back in March, had more or less a full payments in 2035. That has been eliminated. So we now have only extended our total debt service payment, payments out by three years. I'm also happy to report that the swap came in much better than we anticipated. We, we were looking at about savings of about $169,000 by terminating that swap. The final numbers came in that, that over the life of this swap, with the payments that we would have had to make, we are saving about $693,000. So that again contributed to reducing the overall debt service that we have on this new bond issue.
Okay. Under the budget?
I'm not going to give you a full budget report tonight. Typically, we try to bring you that budget report at this meeting. We need another week to pull some things together. I just want to take a moment and thank Neil and Randy and John. They, we've been working very closely on this budget as a team. I think this year, we, we have tightened up things in the budget and in our accounting system to the point where I'm very comfortable with where we're at, and we're correcting a lot of issues as we go through that, and we're very happy with it. I can report that at this point in the process, it looks like that the, the numbers will come in very close to what PFM's projections are. So we will, we will be presenting that to you next week in more detail, and we will start a discussion and continue that through, through spring with the final adoption in June. The other thing that I just want to point out, we looked at the, the board meeting calendar, and we have to have 30 days of public inspection on the bond, or on the budget between the preliminary budget, which is adopted in May, and the final budget, which is adopted in June. There's not 30 days between the May and June meeting, so we are going to need a special meeting in June to adopt that final budget.
Thank you. Do we know what? Did we have a date?
We don't have a date yet.
We don't have a date yet.
I'm on vacation the 21st.
You can call it. I'll send you the paperwork.
From the beach?
We'll give you some reading stuff. Absolutely. Cash report, Mr. John Coon.
So John, John is coming up tonight to present a, again, we're continuing to refine our reporting to the school board. If you recall, about two years ago, we revised the secretary's report to provide you monthly budget to actual comparisons. One of the other things that, that we've been working on, and John has been able to accomplish here, in, in the couple of months that he's been here, is we have tightened up our bank reconciliation process, and we were now, starting with next month, be able to provide you very timely cash information, which is required in the school code. So John, if you would mind taking a few minutes at your place tonight as the summary of that, that cash flow report, I just want him to explain what that looks like and what you can expect from it.
If you look, there should be a copy of this in your packet there. It's pretty simple. What it is, is it's a listing of every cash account that we're responsible for, and it's going to show you the balance at the beginning of the month, any disbursements or receipts in the balance at the end of the month. You can see the general fund on there. That's the big one, and that's going to encompass our cash on hand as well as our liquid investments. So that's the total of those, and you get the investment summary as a part of your board packet. If you'll notice, this is for the month of February. As Brian mentioned, we're kind of a month behind on the reporting, but we're hoping to have that tightened up, and then next month for the May meeting, we'll have you a people financial report, so we'll have up-to-date information on everything that's going on. My pleasure.
Thank you. Any questions, Bobby?
Why is she picking up?
I'm not, I'm just asking.
Mr. Patrón, I just want to point out, you know, if you see this report, we do have, actually have cash in the bank now. And it's very nice to see that. If you recall, before the $14 million, we would never, we were taking out trans to, to carry our cash balance, and on a regular basis, we're holding bills because we just didn't have enough money in the bank to, to make those payments on time and our payroll. So it's a very, very welcome news to see that those days are behind us and we're moving forward in a positive direction.
Okay, we, anything on new business? Not seeing anything. We do need an executive session for personnel matters and legal matters. And any other matter before we, yes, Tom?
I was just wondering, originally, right around now, the Secretary of Education has come to us, his reaction, so there's a lot of work. I didn't hear anything official or other, where is that? Since now, it's the time he was originally going to be here. Do we know anything?
So we, I believe I sent out in one of the updates that we were looking at a potential date for May 23rd. Was that right, Mr. Brockman?
I believe that's correct.
If that was in the update you sent, I apologize. I only got to the first part of the update.
It may not have been.
I deserve that. Get me heart with that.
All right. If nothing else, we'll recess for about 5, 10 minutes and meet back up in Room 3.